All right, we'll get started. This is Brian Waller, Zoning Board of Appeals Chairman. As a preliminary matter, we'll start by confirming that all remote members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Ms. Biswas?
Here.
Mr. Berger?
Mr. Berger's here.
All right, Ms. Koshros is in the room.
Yep, here.
Good evening. It is 7:05 PM. This open meeting of the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted both remotely and in person, consistent with the Legislative Acts of 2021, Chapter 20, Section 20, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting is convened via Zoom video conference, as posted on the meeting agenda, which can be found on the Town of Grafton website. Please see the meeting agenda for details on how to participate remotely. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. All participation within this meeting will be visible to others. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you, and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording of this meeting, and that the recording may be published or rebroadcast at a later date. This meeting will feature public comment. To request acknowledgement to speak, please use, excuse me, the raise hand feature in Zoom. The meeting administrator will enable you to speak when it's your turn. For those on the phone exclusively, the AV staff will coordinate with the meeting administrator to allow you to speak. Finally, each vote taken during this meeting will be done by a roll call vote. So there's two cases on. We had a, we received a withdrawal for case number 889, 95 Weston Street. But then Katrina just provided us with an email that was received at 5:36 PM today. Hello, in light, from Jennifer Reichlich. In light of the recent development and contradiction to my zoning determination application for proposed use of entertainment amplified music venue at 95 Weston Street, I request to continue my case. So it sounds like she's seeking to, instead of withdraw, to just continue to a future meeting.
Mr. Chairman, you need to appoint, you need to appoint Metalli as a voting member.
All right, so I will appoint Metalli as a voting member for the ZBA. And it should be noted that we have four members in attendance. We, I believe, only need a simple majority for any of the votes that we're going to take tonight. So I don't think that should be an issue. Is there any comment on the request for continuance of 95 Weston versus the withdrawal? Mr. Berger, any feedback or information on that?
Um, no.
Okay.
I, I gave them a zoning determination. The zoning determination was twofold. Private parties, they got a cease and desist on, and live entertainment. We made it, I made a determination that the live entertainment was not allowed in that residential zone. So I didn't know I was going to be here tonight, so I'm really not that prepared. I was in a disability commission meeting. Katrina gave me a text and said, please come in. So I probably have the complaint up here in, in OpenGov. And again, it was just on the private party functions and the live entertainment. I, I know that they are now complaining about music off the radio, or however they're producing the music, but that's not what my determination was on. Katrina, I don't know if you can, you can pull that up or not. You might have a better shot at it than me. It's the zoning determination.
Uh huh. Give me a minute.
And, and what I'm reading right now, it says, on, on their proposed use is entertainment slash amplified music venue. But what, what I'm looking at, that's, that was their request, and I'm saying that what they advertised was the live music, and that is not allowed. And that's what my zoning determination is saying. Now, if, if the music is too loud, because we've already established through state regulations, if they're over 10 decibels over the ambient DBA level, then I can, I can put a note in. That's the cease and desist.
Oh, do you want it?
I can put, I can put a note in and inform the police department that they are disturbing the peace on that aspect. And everybody has my cell phone number, so, you know, they, they know how to reach out to me because I have the, the meter. But for live entertainment, it's not allowed. Music out of a radio, or however they're producing it, I really can't tell somebody that they can't have music, because anybody's allowed to turn on the radio. Now, this is a thing with copyright, I'm not going to get into that.
Yep.
How about amplified?
Not live, but that, that's a radio. Mr. Adams, that's a radio. Amplified music, as, as they put in their zoning determination, you know, entertainment slash amplified music, that's a live band. That's what I was, that's what I was ruling on, was the live band. I mean, if you have something going on in your backyard, and you put on your radio, you put on your radio, you go to other, other farms, and, you know, there's music in the background. You go to the, the Milbury Mall, there's, there's music all over the, they pipe in music. That's not what I was talking about. I'm talking about is live bands.
Bob, I don't have your zoning determination that was ever filled out.
You do.
Bob, the 10 decibel, that state, you said?
Yes.
At the?
Over, over the ambient, over the ambient. So I know what the ambient is in that neighborhood. I've already taken those readings.
Um, and where is it measured? Is it measured like?
From the property line.
Yeah, but in their case, where the property line is so long, is it measured right across from their garden area there? They, I mean, the beer area? Or is it measured down 500 feet away at the sunflowers?
Well, you know, if, if I was better prepared, I could find the chart that I made. And there's a telephone pole in front of their farm stand, and that's where I've been taking all my measurements.
Okay.
Bob, I have the two zoning determinations, but there's nothing filled out. I don't have one.
You go up, you go up, you go up above, under attachments.
I am. I have one from August 9th, and one from September 27th, and there's nothing in there from you.
Yeah, there it is. Go to August 9th and open it.
Oh, not permitted in the zone. Never mind. I found it.
There you go. Okay, and when we're saying the entertainment, that's, entertainment is the, is the band. That's not, that's not a hi-fi or, or, you know, a radio.
All right, so, I mean, I think the only thing before us is a request to continue. I don't, is there a certain time that that has to be submitted?
Well, they're supposed to submit 48 hours before, but we do have on our agenda that, you know, items not anticipated by the chair 48 hours in advance of meeting can be heard. So.
I mean, it was on the agenda, this case was on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, this was on the agenda. She just changed from the withdrawal to continue her case, so.
But I, and I know we've done in the past last minute requests.
Yep. Yes, we have.
So I.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Yeomans?
May I suggest that we allow a continuance to the next public date of the meeting of the ZBA?
You may. Does that mean we need to pick one now?
Yes, we do.
Are there any?
I have not gotten anything yet. There is one that will eventually be coming in, but they are required to get a certified plot plan. So I don't know when they'll be coming in.
Metalli, when are you back?
Sorry, can you say that again, please?
Oh, when are you back?
When do you come back?
On November 29th. 28th, yes.
So let's try for December 8th.
That sounds good.
Works for me.
All right, so at this time, I entertain a motion to continue case number 889 for 95 Weston Street to the next public meeting of the ZBA to be held on December 8th.
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Biswas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Case continued to December 8th. So the other item on the agenda is Grafton Court.
Right. Jeff Walsh was going to try and send somebody out there to see if the three items on the list, which were, where's Jeff's letter?
Mr. Chair, I think you're done with me. I can go back to my other committee?
Yes. Thanks, Mr. Berger.
Thank you.
Hi, Robert.
Hi, Bob.
There were three things on Jeff's list. That street signs need to come off the utility poles, and regular signs need to be posted. The approved, there needs to be a handicap parking sign in the spot, there isn't one there. It's only painted on the, on the thing. And then there's some accumulated sediment and trash that needs to be removed. Jeff was supposed to try and get somebody out there, but he just hasn't been able to, so I haven't gotten anything in writing back from him. We did get from Jeff an updated plot plan showing the propane tanks, the lines, and lines into the house. So I do have that. And then the other question, so Tier had asked, were the two bonds? There's a bond for conservation, and then we have a $14,000 soil erosion and sediment bond. So those are the two bonds that we have on him. One's $14,000 and the other's $25,000. But that's it. So I think Jeff was tied up with, we had some issues over at Fisherville and with the mediation today, so I don't think he, I just don't think he got anybody out there.
Yeah.
I mean.
So I, I don't know if there's.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Yeomans?
Are we able to sign these anticipating a positive response from Graves Engineering? And, you know, when we get that, you know, it's done?
Well, I don't know that we need to sign them until we have that, but I think basically that's what we've already communicated, that we provisionally.
Right.
Approved them.
Yeah.
We just need that letter from Jeff, so I think, I don't know that we need to wait, we don't need to wait for another meeting for that.
I know. As far from what we discussed last time was, as soon as I get that letter from Jeff, that everything's fine, I can go ahead and release the bonds and close everything out.
Has, has Conservation given us a letter saying everything's okay? Because you just said something about Conservation, that they're.
There's a, yeah, there's a bond for Conservation. I can check with Leah. If I know Sotir, he, wow, I printed the same bond twice. It's for Conservation. I can check with Leah. I don't know if I've gotten anything, whether if she gave it to Sotir, but I will check with Leah.
I think we should have a copy of something.
Yeah, that they've released it. Yep.
Right.
I'll check with Lee and Jan tomorrow.
Is, is there any reason this couldn't wait till December?
We don't even need to wait for.
We don't, yeah, we don't have time.
We just need to get the.
We just need to get the, the letter from Jeff that everything's been done. And that's what I'm waiting on, and he just, he just hasn't had a chance to send somebody out to the site to make sure those things have been done.
Okay.
And once I get that letter, I'll distribute it to all of you. He's good. He emails it to me, and then he snail mails it to me, so I get like triple kick copies.
Yep.
Which isn't a bad thing.
All right.
Of course, it's just, it all gets turned over to the association anyways, the road, right?
Correct. That one's going to an association. He has an HOA over there.
And none of the people that live there are disputing anything that we know of?
No, there was one guy who had an issue about, he wanted to make his deck bigger, and we're like, yeah, you can't. And then with the erosion on the back of the hill where the rocks are that abuts the town property, so Sotir went out and looked at that, and Jeff went out and looked at that, and they added some stuff to it. But that's been it. I mean, otherwise, it's been very quiet over there with everybody, now that it's all sold.
All right, so we don't have to take any action on that tonight?
Well, do we have to vote to? Have we already voted to authorize signing after we get Jeff's?
Yeah.
We've already done that, okay.
Yeah, we did that last.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Actually, I, I take that back. We didn't.
We didn't vote on anything. I think Bill wanted to wait.
No, I, I don't think we needed a vote.
No, we don't need a vote. We just need to close everything out once, and, but.
Oh.
Yeah, we don't have to close anything yet. It's just more administrative stuff.
Okay.
It's on my end. I have to make sure you guys are okay with the as-bills and everything else, before I can release the money I have on account for the peer review, and then release the bonds. So that's basically what it is. It's not a vote on anything, because we're, it's not going public, it's going into an HOA.
This is the same as Providence Road.
Correct. Correct.
Lucky you got to do that just a while ago, then.
Yeah. Absolutely. But Sotir has all his ducks in a row, like, he's so organized that it's just waiting on Jeff, and Jeff has been swamped, so I can't really. He jumps, he jumps when I ask him to, so this was just one of those things that kind of, with everything else going on, he just didn't have a chance.
I don't, I don't think there's any pressure from us. I think Sotir, if anyone, is the one that.
Right. Right. And I know Sotir, I think Sotir's out of town right now, so he just, as long as I get everything in the next couple of weeks, so he can get his money back, I think that's all.
Well, it's probably get his bond money off of there, and.
Yep.
Probably the other thing is, so he doesn't have to snowplow it.
Yeah. I'm sure that's part of it. I'm sure. But I'll check with Leah and see if there's a release that I haven't gotten yet.
Yeah, so I guess if, you could do those separately, right? The Conservation Bond could be released once you get.
Yeah.
Sign off from them.
Absolutely. Yep. The Conservation Bond can release, and then once I get the other stuff, then I can release the money I have on account for him and the bond we have, so.
Was there two Conservation things you mentioned?
Well, you know what it is? I just realized. It's one bond, but I, it's maintenance of all soil and sediment control. And, oh, yeah, there is two different ones. One is for the maintenance of all soil erosion and sediment control for phase one, and then the second one is restoration of resource areas or any buffer zone disturbance. So that was a $25,000 bond, and the other one was a $14,000 bond. So we have 20, you know, we have $39,000 in bonds we're holding on him.
I mean, I would think Leah's got to go out and look at that stuff, too.
Yeah, so I'll double, like I said, I'll double check with her and Jan tomorrow to see if Lee's gone out and that, if that stuff's been released.
Good. So there was mediation today regarding the High Point case and their appeal to PAC. So we'd like to schedule an executive session next week to just review that and.
It'll be a review, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Yeomans?
Yeah, it's just an executive session with Dan Hill to discuss.
Basically, to update the board on the mediation, where things stand, and, and what's next there.
When you say next week, you mean October 27th?
No. So Katrina's out.
I'm not here the 26th, but I will be back on the 27th. I land at like 4:30.
What day is the 20th?
The 27th is Thursday. So I don't know if you want to bump it to Thursday, but.
Mr. Chairman?
I think, yeah, once, I think Dan Hill wasn't available Thursday.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Like I said, just someone in the meeting needs to take the minutes. So whether it's Kay, or one of you guys, or Metalli, but somebody just needs to take the minutes, so I can transcribe them. That's all.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's not an issue. So how do we start the public meeting for that?
So, um, you would, we would schedule a hearing, I'd post it, and then the minute you open it, you say we're going into executive session, and that you are going to adjourn the meeting while in executive session, and that's it.
Okay.
That's.
So, so we don't need Bill to record it or anything, right?
No.
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 No, because you're literally, you're going to be in open meeting for like 30 seconds.
Yeah.
You're going to open it and, and go into executive session.
All right.
So I don't think we need Bill, because before, we never were live. I'll double check with that.
Yeah, you better.
I'll double check tomorrow. We may have to have Bill, but literally for five minutes, which is kind of ridiculous.
We'll try to get you off the hook.
I, I think you do. I think you.
But I think we may have to.
I think you're going to have to have him here.
I think so. Just for five minutes.
And get that thing, he's got to read.
Yes, I will find that.
Because we don't want to get ethics yelling at us.
No, no, I will find that. I, I will dig that out. I don't know where it is, but I will find it.
All right.
So it's going to be on 10/26 at 7:00?
Wednesday.
At 7:00?
Um, yeah. Does it have to be 7:00?
It can be whatever time you guys want it. I mean, it's just whatever, every time, everybody can beat it. And I'll do a Zoom link, so are you guys going to do Zoom or in person?
I'd rather do Zoom.
All right, I'll set it up Zoom. Um, hmm, someone's going to have to open it and run it.
Can you?
I'll, I could take my computer with me.
No, I mean, you can, if you can make me a co-presenter.
Yeah, I'll, I'll set you up that way, yeah, when I set it up tomorrow.
Yeah, because I use it all the time, so.
Yeah, I'll set you up.
So actually, then, it's, Bill, are you able to just log in and record it remotely? Or do you have to be here?
I think he has to be here. I don't know, Bill, can you do it remotely, or do you have to be here?
I have to be here.
You have to be here. So you would still have to come in, just for the five minutes.
Sorry, we tried.
Can he, can he set that thing up so I can shut it off?
I don't know.
Well, if we adjourn from executive session, I think we can just, as soon as we go in.
Yeah, as soon as you go in, he'll leave. Literally, he will be here in like five minutes.
No, if I come down here.
Doesn't matter. If you come down, oh, you're going to need a computer.
I mean, I can do it on my phone, but.
The only thing is, I just, I'm not going to be here. So you need a computer to get into the meeting. Because even if we were in executive session, he can't run the camera. You'd have to, we'd have to go in to be.
Right.
And be on my computer.
I'll do it on my phone. I did it once before.
Yeah, you did, from your house. Yeah, so I'll set that link up and get it out to everybody.
It'll, it'll, I mean, audio is really the, as long as you can hear, I think.
Right. No, I, I had to picture everything, but we set up a, one, a laptop one time, and just couldn't get it to work.
Yeah. It can be touchy.
All right.
What time?
So what time you want it? At 7:00 or 6:00, or? What time did they say? What time did, do you know what time they said, Bill?
I think 7:00 is, that's what he's accustomed to.
All right, we'll do 7:00.
Okay. All right, I'll get that set up. And yeah, Brian and I have to set Brian up as administrator.
So Wednesday, October 26th, at 7:00, virtual is okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
October 26th or 7th?
26th.
Wednesday, the 26th.
26th.
Wednesday, the 26th.
Okay.
And Katrina, perhaps you could let Kay know?
Yeah, well.
Thank you.
I'll send out, I'll send out an email.
That timing works. I might be a little bit late. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
I just don't know when my train's going to come in.
Well, they fixed everything, didn't they?
Oh, you know, they say that all the time. Knock on wood, it's been, it hasn't been too bad, really.
All right. So reorganization will punt to the December 8th meeting. And then for the minutes, did anyone have any additional changes?
Other than the ones McCusker emailed to you guys this afternoon?
I haven't had a chance to review them.
How soon after the meeting do they have to be approved?
Whenever. You can, if you want to hold them till the, the December meeting, we can hold them to the December meeting and do tonight's minutes and those minutes. I mean, it's your call. I went, I went one time, and it was eight months before they got posted, because we just did not have a meeting. You're supposed to approve them at the next meeting, but.
I think that rarely happens, doesn't it?
I think we're one of the few boards that is that up to date on minutes. I'm not sure.
All right. Yeah, so we'll, we'll just hold off on approving these minutes.
Okay.
So I think that is it. So to recap, next public meeting on December 8th at 7:00 PM, executive session on October 26th at 7:00 PM with Dan Hill. Yeah, at this time, I entertain a motion to close or adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Yeomans?
I just checked my calendar. Katrina, I'll not be available on the 8th of. eighth of December.
Okay.
We wanna do the
Sixteenth would be the next.
Fifteenth, I think.
Yeah, the fifteenth. That's December. I mean, we could do the fifteenth if everyone's available.
Anyone have an issue with the fifteenth?
I'm alright.
Metalli, are you okay with the fifteenth? Okay, so we'll just check with Bill and Kay, but if we do it partial, then, so we're moving it to December eighth, or December fifteenth. So, let me change that. Continue to
Okay, so at this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, do a roll call vote, Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Bizwas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, meeting is adjourned. Thanks.